We stood there with our suitcases and then drove away. It was so weird.
We're gonna get going. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our work session for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are really happy to be back in our normal chambers. And Jim has a little bit of a announcement about that.
Yeah, everybody, welcome back to the chambers. I want to give a thank you and shout out to a few that are here in the room to help. Black Group, Jan and Peter, our design team, this project and several others, but thank you. And then, of course, Striker and Company did the construction work. Turned out beautiful. So, thank you. Mark Armstrong, managed the project from the city side. Did great. And then, of course, every project comes with complications, and Mark handled them very well. And then, of course, Greg Story, wherever he's at, putting the magic behind the scenes, so.
He's like the Wizard of Oz.
Where is he? Oh, he's behind the scenes.
So, thank you, everybody, and welcome back.
Outstanding. Yeah, we want to give you all a big thank you and kudos on a job well done. We're really excited to be back. It looks fantastic. We're really gonna have a, I think, a little better flow of meetings as well. All right, we'll go ahead and kick it off with our first item, which is induct, our introduction of new city employees.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce two new city employees. First, we'll get Chief Hall up here for Katie Parish from the Animal Control Officer.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. So, this is Katie Parish. She's our new animal control officer. And as you know from the past, it is hard to fill these positions, so we're really happy that she's here and that she's on board. She comes from Southern Michigan. She's actually has quite a bit of customer service in her background and also marketing, which I thought was interesting. So, with that, I will let her introduce herself to you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Parish, I'm the animal control officer. So, I actually just recently moved out here in August from Eugene, Oregon. I was born and raised in Michigan. I married my high school sweetheart right out of high school. He joined the Marine Corps, so in California for five years at Camp Pendleton. And then after that, we moved back to Michigan for a little bit. That's where I had our son. He's seven now. His name's Michael. And then after that, we went to, we moved to Eugene, Oregon. And that's where I was for five years and where I was the marketing manager for a real big company out there. And then in the summertime, my husband's job was, they told me to work remotely. And so, we decided, you know, let's move closer to family. And we were driving through Colorado to Slido, where I have some family. And I also have family in Montrose. Since we stopped to visit them, we just loved it here. And like, we just gotta be here and just packed up everything in the span of like, two months and moved out here. And I'm here. And my cousin actually, she told me about this job. And I was like, you know, I thought about it for a while. And like, yeah, that's something that, it sounds really interesting to me. And I got into it. And I'm loving, I'm loving what I'm doing. And I feel like I'm really, you know, helping out and being a part of the community. And I'm really enjoying it. I'm loving being here.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Jim?
And I'm introducing John Sullivan, our new special event manager. So, he'll be involved, obviously, in all special events, but amphitheater-related events, downtown events, pretty much anything special and event-related. He's, he's all over it. So, I'll let John introduce himself and tell you about him.
Good morning, everyone. My name's John Sullivan. As Jim said, Public Works Special Events Manager. Honored to be here and working for the great city of Montrose. Let's see. Was born and raised in San Diego, California. Moved to Colorado Springs. At a very young age, my grandfather was a retired Air Force Colonel, and his plane is on display outside the Air Force Academy. Maybe you've seen that big V-52 bomber out there. So, he wanted to bring the whole family out to Colorado, and that's how we got here. I spent my, my youth climbing and skiing, and that brought me to Euray, to climb in the ice park in up Red Mountain Pass for skiing. So, I've always known Montrose and the area. And I thought, man, someday I'd really like to get out here. COVID was a really interesting catalyst to bring my wife and I here. We saw an opportunity. I had, my background was in mountain guiding and multi-facility management, human resources, marketing, everything under the sun, really. We had three climbing gyms on the front range, including a technical mountain guiding service. COVID shut all that down for us, so we didn't really know what to do. The opportunity arose to come to Montrose. We fought real hard to buy property here. We did, thankfully, right off North Second Street. My wife started working for the city of Montrose. She spoke highly of it. She had worked for many cities in the past. And I couldn't help but, but hear the wonderful stories. And when this job opened, I thought, I would really like to pursue that. And it's been a really great experience ever since. And so, I'm very happy to be here and to be a part of it. Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thanks.
Our next item is our Eagle Scout project presentation.
I have some, like, informational, just like an informational paper. And I think I have enough for everybody. So, could you pass these down for getting one to everyone?
If you would start by introducing yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jack Flower. I'm a junior at Montrose High School, and I'm a Life Scout in Troop Four-Ninety-One here in Montrose. And I'm working on my Eagle Scout project. So, and it's probably been, you know, I joined Cub Scouts in second grade, so it's been a culmination of, you know, years of work to get here. So, I'm very excited to present with you guys my idea for my Eagle Scout project. The whole goal of the project is to do something to benefit my community and to show leadership. So, originally, our idea was to, I mean, I always wanted to do something with recycling, because I think that's a great way to help the community. And so, I started with an idea to put out, like, recycling bins and then recycle materials and work with a company called TerraCycle to put a bench in. And over the, you know, last couple of months, the project has shifted and changed in scope. And so, and after working with a lot of different people, we came to the project that I have today. So, now I, our idea is to do a big cleanup at the Summer Music Series on June second this summer. And then, and do like, an educational aspect as well, because, you know, there's only so much that you can do in one project, but if you can educate people on how to recycle themselves, then, you know, I, I feel that that has a lot more impact going forward on the community. So, I already met with some people at the Montrose Public Works. We met with Jim Shai, Daniel Payne, and Abel Villarde to kind of talk about how the project would look. So, we have close to twenty scouts in our troop. So, I'm hoping that I could get, you know, eight, nine, ten scouts to come out to the amphitheater on June second to come. And some of them will do, like, recycling help, so picking up trash and, you know, recycling what can be recycled. And then, some of them will be at a booth to kind of offer, like, educational materials and just to educate people. And Montrose Recycles will also be there. So, I met with Leslie. She's, she's like, the president of Montrose Recycles. And she was very excited about the idea. She offered a lot of materials and help with posters to, you know, to provide that educational aspect of the project. And she also was hoping that we could do, like, a composting aspect as well, because after talking with her a lot, it sounded like sometimes recycling is difficult, because sometimes people don't know what can and can't be recycled. And so, if, if something that can't be recycled is tossed into a recycling bin, it could contaminate the rest of the contents of the bin. And so, it could just cost a lot of money, and not, not much material gets recycled in the end. So, she said composting is a great way to add on to what you already recycle. So, but they were very excited to have help with, because they were gonna be at the Summer Music Series. So, yeah, I'm very excited to be working with Montrose Recycles. Let's see. So, what I plan on doing going forward is I'm going to meet with Dave Bowman. And he's, he's in the crowd right now to talk about the event, because, you know, he's kind of coordinating the event. And then, continue meeting with Leslie, because she has a ton of, you know, they have a presentation at the library right now on things that can and can't be recycled. One of the big things we talked about was Domino's Pizza. And on their pizza boxes, they say that, you know, this box can be recycled even if, even if it's like greasy with pizza, pizza grease. So, a lot of people are, like, putting the boxes in bins and stuff, thinking that they're, you know, helping things. But actually, those boxes aren't recyclable. And so, it's contaminating a lot of the things that are, you know, being thrown into the bins. So, she said that any help that they can get with showing people kind of what can and can't be recycled is, is a good thing. So, I guess the whole scope of the project is creating, like, an educational aspect with making posters. We're gonna have a table set up with, like, a model compost bin, and how to make your own compost bin, and what can be put in a compost bin, and then also what can be put in a recycling bin. Yeah, but I'm very excited about this project, and I'm excited to be here today to share it with you guys. Do you guys have any questions about the project or the scope?
Sounds great.
I think it sounds fantastic. We look forward to hearing more about your progress as it moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's always exciting seeing our youth getting involved in projects like this that are gonna really benefit our community. Thank you. Next item, Item A, Ordinance Clarification, Charter Qualifications for City Council Candidates. Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, and members of the public. I'm hearing a proposal to add a use footnote to Article One, Section Seven of our charter. The proposal appears on pages two through four of the packet, and the proposed language that would be added appears on page three in bold under Section One. This is brought pursuant to Article Ten, the miscellaneous provisions, Section Three, clarification of the charter, which reads in full, "The city reserves the right to clarify charter provisions via city ordinance if deemed necessary for the efficient administration of the city government." We propose to add a footnote to Article One, Section Seven. This adds a canon of construction, the canon of constitutional avoidance. So, I'll talk about what that means. Basically, first, what is a canon of construction? When a court is tasked with interpreting language, whether it be in a statute, whether it be in a court rule, a state constitution, or a home rule, charter provision, like the case at Bar here, the court would result, resort to certain interpretive guides for, to figure out what the language means in a given application, and how to apply that, then, to a given set of facts. These cans of construction are very common. They're common to see in judicial rulings and opinions. They are procedural. They're not substantive law. This is not accordingly a substantive law change or addition before you. That would require, actually, a charter amendment pursuant to another section. So, this is a clarification only to add a use note. What is the canon of constitutional avoidance? So, the Colorado Supreme Court has described that as, and I'll read from a court case, "Statutory terms should be construed in a manner that avoids constitutional infirmities. Thus, if a statute is capable of alternative constructions, one of which is constitutional, then the constitutional interpretation must be adopted. If there is more than one possible interpretation of the statute, we must adopt the constitutional construction." In other words, if there's ambiguity in a statute under the typical application of this canon, one of which is a constitutional interpretation and one is not, the court is to afford the constitutional interpretation, the benefit of the doubt, and to use that. That would be employed here. The language in our proposal would remove the predicate finding of ambiguity to employ that interpretive canon. This, in general, is directed to a court of competent jurisdiction, to extent one is called upon to pass over this language in this particular provision, to construe our charter provision in harmony with the state constitution. That is its intent. That is its purpose. Staff recommends adding this footnote to add the interpretive canon. And I could take any questions to the extent council has any.
Yeah, I do. I have one. And what necessitated the installing of this language right now, instead of perhaps maybe in the future, when we have a bunch of possible code changes to the city charter, to have it come via city ordinance rather than a vote of the public?
So, that's two different kind of applications or processes here. I'm aware that the city attorney, along with a number of, of this body, is doing a charter committee and taking a look at amendments where the charter could be either clear or more in accord with best practices. I'm aware that that's going on. Those are substantive changes. This is a procedural change. It would be brought appropriately as clarification and by ordinance. So, it's different procedural mechanisms as called for by a charter and kind of a different focus. The charter committee is more broad-based.
So, we're, to be clear, we're not, in this, we're not changing the charter, which would require a vote of the people. All we're doing is a clarification of a part of the, our existing charter.
Exactly correct. Yes, sir.
I think the most important distinction is probably is it's procedural or not substantive?
That is also correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item B, the two thousand and twenty-three water supply and runoff forecast. City Engineer Scott Murphy.
I'm working out the tech here. So, thank you. So, we do this every year, starting last couple of years. This one's a little more exciting, because it's a big snowpack out there, so it's gonna be a little longer than normal. But the idea with this is to kind of, going into the spring, help everybody understand where we are as far as water supply and what the outlook is as far as our reservoirs and, you know, water restrictions or anything like that. Then this year, we've thrown in runoff, because this year's will be a little more adventurous than usual. So, let me get logged in here. Is that true? I'm near the roof as well. Or, I guess you guys can see there. Let's see. Okay. So, I'll start with, oh, yeah, wrong button.
It's right away. I have to.
I'll talk to the designer. So, I'll start with water supply first. That one should be a little quicker. So, this is the, and a lot of this stuff changes by the day, so this is a little outdated at the time it went in the packet. But as of April night, these were where the snow packs were sitting, in the various basins. It's kind of hard to see through the transparency. This is Montrose right here. So, you have the Uncompagreed Plateau here, and the Gannison running down to the east. The way the snow fell this year is definitely an artifact of, I think, storm track. And you can kind of see some of the rain shadow, shadow areas in it. I guess speaks to the variability to, you know, feast in one area and, you know, a hundred miles away, it's famine. You can kind of see some of these basins here in the red. And then, as you get on these kind of frontline ones, as they storm track, and they generally track a little further to the north. And you can see how they're in the, you know, two hundred plus percent snowpack. And this is snowwater equivalent, so it takes into account, you know, various types of snow. But up above us, you know, so the Gannison Uncompagreed, you know, relatively normal, or not, you know, above normal, but within a range of kind of typical, you know, swings that you, we do see every year. When you get into the higher country, though, and some of this feeds into Blue Mesa, these are getting, we're getting a lot higher. On the Uncompagreed Plateau, which we'll talk about on the flooding side, or the runoff side, is historically really good snowpack out there. So, what that means for us, so, I'll kind of start with locally, regionally, and then, I guess, yeah, I'll start small and zoom out, starting with Ridgeway. So, we work with, Tri-County operates Ridgway Reservoir. If you remember, our water program uses lease, there's an municipal industrial pool in Ridgway Reservoir that Tri-County operates. We're a sub lessy to that, so, you know, our ten thousand acre feet that we kind of target as our maximum supply comes out of Ridgway, but is operated by Tri-County on behalf of the Bureau of Reclamation. To further complicate that, our water doesn't actually come out of Ridgway yet. It will, parts of it will with Nutriture Plant, but the water actually comes out of Blue Mesa through the Gannison Tunnel, and they do a waterway exchange, so that the agricultural users can use the water that comes out of Ridgway, because hydraulically it's higher and it can bring certain portions of their system in line into play. But, so, you know, these are primarily operated by Tri-County. These forecasts come from the Bureau of Reclamation. They do all the forecasts for all of the, you know, western reservoirs that they operate. It's looking, it's, I mean, no surprise, Ridgway will fill no problem. Right now, it's at about seventy-five percent full. They're making room. They are up there with releases, and Ridgway is currently dropping, even as the warm temperatures come in. Plateau last week with the high temperatures, but it's dropping again. As that's kind of, as it gets cold again, it kind of locks up some of that snow amount up above Ridgway. So, the black line here is the anticipated elevation. So, as, you know, they're releasing kind of, the blue line is anticipated water coming in. The green line is what they plan to release, so you can kind of see they step it up as they try and kind of match those inflows. And the, the perfect scenario is they come within an inch of the spillway, you know, so they can use and get as much power generation as they can. Once this reservoir spills and it's going over the spillway, they don't have a means to throttle that. And so, you're, it equals out at that point. And if you get a big surge, so that, you know, the big things you worry about are like a rain on a snow event. So, you get later into the season, you get a big storm event that, you know, not only is snow melting, but then you add rain on top of that, which, you know, the rain itself, plus the accelerated snow amount that comes with it, you get some pretty large flows. So, you want to keep a degree of buffer within the reservoir to attenuate those. And that's kind of how they operate. So, feeling good about it. I think that, you know, we're sitting just in the right spot, they're managing it well. And, you know, this, this was the March forecast. They, on Friday, released another one, but it's pretty similar. You know, just, this is the line. And so, they just want, they want the black line to kiss the blue line and then kind of stay there as long as possible. And then, obviously, as irrigation demands and runoffs, runoff goes down, irrigation demands stay, you know, the reservoir will stop dropping, you know, which completely wrong. So, that's, you know, that's where our, our pool on paper comes from, and, you know, as expected, looking at it. So, no worry about local water supply this year. Up that ten thousand, we're using about four. And so, plenty of room to grow. And reminder of our Water Resources master plan, looking at our long-range forecasting. That's coming together really well. We're very pleased with the consultant on that one. And we'll be working on a report of what it means for our kind of policy decisions going forward, the programs, to be good stewards of this resource. Because regionally, as we zoom out more, you'll see there's, there's still a problem on the Colorado. Zooming out, oh, and this is to kind of give you a feel for how that runoff this year compares, or run-in to the reservoir compares to typical. So, the black line is forecast for this year, and then these are exceedance probabilities. So, it's a pretty decent, decent runoff. And we're very, we're very happy. We'll take it. A snowpack above Ridgway, just some comparisons, you know, of, there's a couple other years, just to kind of give you a feel. But it's not the biggest on record by any means, but it's, it's good and it's solid. And it's a great thing. Water's, water's good. Moving out to Blue Mesa, so it's, you know, we keep an eye on it for two reasons. One, because we fish there, and we want to know what it's gonna do. The other is, you know, if, if Blue Mesa and all the pressures on the Colorado system could possibly play into how they divert and how they do those exchanges between the two. Another reason, you know, our reminder of the, kind of, the main drivers for the Nutriture Plant is not be reliant on a single basis, because right now, we are. And so, you know, because of that, we kind of keep an eye on these things, understand if there's any vulnerabilities out there. And that being said, Blue Mesa should have a great year. This forecast was the March. Any hour now, they should be coming out with the April forecast. Early indications are this will all be shifting up, which is good, which means more water in Blue Mesa. But right now, Blue Mesa's sitting at about thirty-seven percent full, as far as the time I plotted this. Right now, it's, the runoff is starting, so it's raising about six tenths a day. Pretty soon here, it'll be coming up over a foot a day, most likely. And that's what you see here on these lines. So, you know, as that runoff occurs, kind of peak into, you know, late July, this, the March forecast had them peaking out at seventy-seven percent full, and only about fifteen feet down, fifteen, I guess eighteen on this one, down from maximum pool. Which, if you remember, it was way low, I think it was twenty nineteen, and they're able to fill it a year. You know, it's, it's got a relatively good basin above it. And so, in a good year, it can fill. You know, the question is always, how much are they gonna push downstream? So, yeah, we can fill it, but there's still all those demands downstream, and the pressure's on Lake Powell. If you remember, just two years ago, three years ago, they did the eight-foot release kind of late summer. It sounds like those are kind of off the table for now. They're kind of looking at all their ways to manage the larger system through the Bureau of Reclamation. So, I think, you know, what comes in here should, you know, these, I don't think you'll see drastic drops on the, you know, tail end of this, but it's an unknown. But this forecast is from the Bureau of Reclamation, so if they were planning on doing that, I would think they would include that in their forecast, and they have. So, that's encouraging for us. So, you know, throughout the water year, that'll drop as irrigation demands. They plan to end the, you know, kind of water season at about seventy percent, the latest forecast. They have a narrative of it, and it was about ten points higher. So, I, I'll replot this when it comes out and send it to everybody, just so you have a free records. But it should be a good year for Blue Mesa, it should come up. Lake Powell, on the other hand, this is the forecast for Lake Powell. So, you know, there's talk of, oh, all this water and things are great, you know, things are great on a micro scale. So, on a yearly basis, it gives us a little breathing room on the overall system, but by no means out of the woods. You know, Lake Powell is currently a hundred and eighty feet low. And, you know, the forecast is thirty-five, twenty-five is kind of their target level. They never want to get below. We're below it right now, just because of overall, you know, decreases and runoff into the reservoirs and increases in demands. And those, all the long-range forecasts on those show that, yeah, there's temporary reprieve right here, but they don't show those trends changing on the, on the larger scale. So, there's very much still a problem on, on Lake Powell, Lake Mead, the overall Colorado system. You know, at the end of, at this year's runoff, you know, you'll come up. By the end of the water year, though, we're maybe fifty feet higher in thirty-five, twenty-five, there's thirty-five, forty-five, twenty feet, twenty feet higher is all at the end of the water year. So, they'll gain some this year. You know, and there's, you know, some degree of uncertainty in these forecasts, so you see a range there. So, you know, it could be anywhere between those lines, most likely. But right where we started, you know, three years ago, one really dry year away from being right back into it. So, you know, they are still looking to reduce overall demands on the Colorado system. The federal government released its EIS environmental impact statement on kind of their options for, you know, they really are trying to cut between three and four million acre feet on a twelve million acre foot system. Their options right now, their spectrum of options are, you know, do nothing, which is kind of let the system crash, be really bad. Nobody thinks they'll do that. They don't do that, because that's, that'll be bad. The second, and they always have to have a do-nothing option against their defense, which is, that's how they do those EIS things. But the other is to go strictly by priority, in which case Arizona would probably be the first cutoff. So, you'd see, you know, essentially, the whole Colorado supply to some of the, you know, central Arizona project, not all of it, but a good chunk of it, to where they, you know, the city of Phoenix, Tucson would be in a really tough place. I don't think they're gonna, that's, that's the, one extreme end of the spectrum would be the priority system. The other is actual cuts at the lower end. So, most of the focus is on how they've done accounting for evaporation over the years and overuse in the lower basin. So, most of the target's been on the lower basin. So, there isn't talks of mandatory, you know, kind of unilateral cuts to the upper basin, which we're in at this point. And so, you know, pending the system getting even worse than it is, or worse than its forecast to get, you know, I think we're, there's, it's not like, you know, one point was like, what are they gonna do? Are they just gonna come and cut everybody on the entire system, upper basin, lower basin, by fifteen percent and kind of make do? And it doesn't seem like that's gonna be the case, as far as we can come at this point. So, good for us, but never, you know, easy, kind of give breather room on some of the way we operate these things. But again, we want to be good stewards of the resource and do our part. And so, by no means should we ever let our foot off the gas. to our part, and so, by no means should we ever let our foot off the gas on those efforts. So, we'll keep doing what we're going to be doing in that regard. So, I think that's it for water supply. I'll go into runoff next. I guess, any questions on water supply? So, next is runoff. So, within town, we keep a close eye on our streams. Obviously, the Antipode River comes right through town. It typically peaks around mid-June. With all the volume this year, it might be a little bit later, but not too much. So, I'd expect, you know, probably third week of June, we'll see the peak on the Antipode River. Our estimates are about 1,300 to 1,500 CFS, which is pretty comparable to what we saw in 2019. Nothing too, you know, scary on that system. You know, those, when those, when we get to that level of flow, you see, you know, the little weaknesses of erosion that, you know, the river's been eaten away over the years. You know, sometimes they finally get to that breaking point, and we have to go out and do some emergency stabilization. Good example was, I think it was 2019, we had to do that Oxbow Bend out by Colorado Outdoors. Treatment Plant has some areas we keep an eye on. Tavawatch, we're currently keeping an eye on. You've got not too much space between the river and the pond there. Want to make sure that that, that it's on an outside bend to make sure those systems are working. But generally, we don't expect any mass flooding or mass, you know, erosion or bank loss, kind of localized issues that we keep an eye on. The smaller streams in town, so kind of in order of basin or, you know, size and how far up the basin goes. So, the smallest is Montrose Royale. That's the one that goes over the hospital. There's always some concerns. It's mapped within the 100-year FEMA flood plan from our study in the 70s. There's always concern that that, you know, culvert under the hospital is kind of a weak point on that system. That, but its basin is relatively small. We don't expect major snow melt. We actually, I think we're past the hump, actually. So, we've, as part of our routine, we go out every day and check every one of these streams to see what they're doing, and if they're rising, we're aware of it, kind of deploying resources appropriately. But, that one is essentially done, as best we can tell. Its basin is mostly melted out because its basin only goes up to Canyon River, any of the buildings there. Next one is Dry Cedar Creek. It peaked last week with some of the warmer weather. It's gone back down. I think it'll rise again with, you know, continued snow melt to its basin. Does go further, a little further up the hill, but nothing, nothing threatening. We don't expect any issues on Dry Cedar Creek. And I guess to help orient people, so Montrose Royale kind of comes through the heart of town. Dry Cedar Creek's the one that's right in front of the rec center there. Ends up right in Antipode River, down by Anderson Road. The next one is Cedar Creek, kind of runs on the north end of town. That one's got a larger basin, and it goes up to Cerro Summit, and kind of, great name of that mesa up there, Poverty Mesa. So, when you stand at Cerro Summit, kind of look to the north, all of that area drains into Cedar Creek. So, there's still a little bit of snow up there, so we'll see that one coming up and down. That system's built to handle a lot more than, it's got a lot, larger channel, deeper channel, larger crossings. So, again, we don't expect any issues. Even with last week's peak, we were not even over 10% of capacity out there. So, so that one's behaving. So, I guess on the east, western, eastern side of the city, you know, everything's looking predictable. The only wild cards there are, again, like a kind of rain on snow events. If you get a really significant rain up in, say, like Cedar Creek right now, you'd see a pretty big rush, might expose some vulnerabilities. Another piece we're keeping an eye on that hadn't dawned on us until CDOC brought it up last week, but, you know, as you drive up towards Cerro Summit, you know, on the right there, there's all those landslides. Years like this, when you get a lot of snow melt, that gets really heavy, lubricates, or the soil gets weaker and likes to move. And so, if that moves down, plugs Cedar Creek, and then, you know, kind of builds a dam, and then it builds up, and then releases in a, you know, quick way, that can create a kind of atypical flood situation. So, that's something that they're keeping a close eye on, and we're helping them keep an eye on that. So, something like that happens, we can release that in control. Very low probability, but high consequence, so it's something to keep an eye on. As you get on the west side of town, things are a little wetter. So, this is the snow tell site from the Antipode River Plateau up on Divide Road. So, this is interesting. The median peak is this green dot right here. The max on record, so not, and this is on the snow tell record, which I think they went in in the 80s, if I remember right. So, it's not, you know, a 100-plus year record by any means, but, you know, in our lifetimes, the max record here was, was purple line, and then this is where we're at today. So, that's, you know, 300% of median snow packed up on the plateau. And anybody who's been up there was excited to tell you just how much snow was up there on at all elevations. So, those contribute to, you know, kind of in our region, Horsefly Creek is kind of south of town, ends up in the Antipode River, south of town, but crosses some city streets. The Dolores, which feeds into Happy Canyon, that's what runs along the western side of Cobble Creek and Waterfall Canyon. So, we have kind of some city infrastructure to keep an eye on there. And then, Spring Creek, nothing really related to the city, outside of, it's just close, we keep an eye on it. And then, the next one down is Dry Creek, and Jim says out my mic's the rage pretty good, even on a mile or years up, it'll probably be a pretty cool sight to see here pretty soon. But, the one that kind of hit last week was, or peaked last week, was Happy Canyon. So, if you go up on West Oak Grove, where the crossing is there, kind of before you go up the hill, you know, it, it saw a pretty good flash, and it's, you know, it's all relative. Not a lot of flow, but that system out there is so flat that the water just spreads and doesn't have a lot of places to go. So, a little bit of flow can look like a lot out there. And the, everything we were keeping an eye on was fine on the city side. You know, the thing we watch most closely is the culvert, Highway 90, where it crosses on Spring Creek there. Because if that were to flood, that water has nowhere to go outside of, you know, building up and then going towards Waterfall Canyon. And that would warrant, you know, some kind of emergency breach or something. But, you know, so far, it's been behaving right there. The flooding that did occur was on Heritage Estates, just downstream there. It's a county mobile home subdivision, and the county has been working to kind of re-channelize some of that and has improved the situation. I, it's down quite a bit now, but there's still quite a bit of snow left in its basin, so I won't be surprised if that peaks again, whether it'll peak to that same level or not. You know, it just kind of depends on nature. It's all about the rate of melt at this point. You know, a couple of things, you think you have this much snowpack, it just takes a long time to melt off, so you have longer sustained runoffs, and then, you know, it pushes further out into the season. And so, you get into those chances of it, you know, warming rapidly and then, of course, coming off rapidly, just gets higher and higher as you get further into the season. So, they're all things we keep an eye on. It's kind of a daily thing for us through this time of year. Even on the lower years, we just want to make sure we keep an eye on it, but especially this year. And I think for the public's benefit, keep an eye on the Montrose Counties and the city have been doing some press releases on, you know, sandbag stations, have asked us to kind of remind residents that nothing in the city is really at risk in the foreseeable future, and so, there are some in the county that are. And so, as those resources are limited, I think your county residents first. And if certainly anything changes in the city, we'll keep everyone well aware, but we don't anticipate any issues.
Good. Any questions?
Very thorough analysis. We appreciate that. All right, moving on. The Block 93 sewer replacement construction contract update. And once again, Ms. Murphy.
So, this was a budgeted project for 2023. You know, long-range, we've been working on, you know, what's Block 93's future going to be as far as, you know, more of a gathering place and plaza style. Ahead of that, we wanted to make sure the utilities are good, and they have essentially reached the end of their life. This is one of the, you know, original town alleys, and, you know, we've gotten plenty of life out of it, but it's, it's reached its end, and the pipe is structurally compromised, collapsed in some areas, and the utility group have worked pretty hard to keep it open and flowing, but it can only do that for so long. So, this project aims to replace those sewers. The scope of work is, so this is just to orient everybody where Block 93 is. This is Townsend and Main, and this is the first alley to the north between Main and North First Street. So, it'd be a wholesale replacement of the east-west line here. This would be done as a directional drill. The alley's so tight that it doesn't really lend itself to open cut, traditional open cut excavation. So, they can drill down the old pipeline, bring a new one back, and then they'll, you know, have localized excavations to reconnect each of the services. This is a city lock parking lot in the middle here. We'll do, be doing a replacement. There is a ladder that goes up there, replacing that. That can be done as a traditional open cut, given the space that we have, so cheaper to do it that way and better control. And then, they did the bore underneath Townsend around Christmas last year, and that pad failed. And then, this reach, we are able to line, or the utility crews are able to line with their lining contract, but in order to facilitate that, we do have to answer a couple manages there. So, you'll see a little bit of work going on. Help orient people there. This is Autozone right here, so right in front of Autozone. It's, it's kind of their parking lot, but it's technically an alley, just kind of unique So, the product was designed in-house, went out a little later than we wanted as we worked out some water issues in the area to make sure that anything, we had, there was a water service that was dated back quite a ways, that was kind of leaking into this line. So, we got, found that leak, repaired that, and that allowed this sewer product to then go forward. But I've been, had three bids, pretty, relatively tight, tighter than we've been seeing lately. The little bid was Skip Houston, Marty's here representing that earlier, for 468104. It's pretty close to the estimate on this one, so as we got into this, the scope of work kind of expanded, so it is larger than what we thought it would be at budget time, and then also prices have gone up. So, we're kind of doing our estimates with more modern pricing. So, the bid was close to the estimate, but it is above the budget. So, I'll go into that here in a minute. As far as, you know, the replacement work, so it's directionally drilled, but there's still a lot of work to find all the utilities, dispose them, reconnect them, do the open cut work, you have staging of all the pipe and all that. So, the current plan is to, we give them a construction window, so we want to try and keep that as compact as possible. So, we give them an ultimate completion date and then a construction window, which is once they start, or start with their first closure, they have to finish the work within 60 days. So, that all apply here. During construction, the eastern half of that parking lot will be closed, so they can still accommodate some degree of parking there, and then local deliveries to businesses will still be accommodated. So, the alley itself will be closed, but any periods of non-work, they'll shut down, and then, obviously, it's trash pickup. They accommodate two days a week in the mornings, and then, delivery truck say to make sure to accommodate that they can still get into the backs of the businesses for their deliveries. So, should be a lot of change for the businesses as far as, they don't have to adjust to their routines or anything like that. Then, the ultimate completion date is in, mid-October. As far as the budget goes, so we did budget 250 for this project, so that's quite a bit over. Again, the largest part of that was the scope, the condition of the pipe and what needed to be done. Fortunately, you know, when we go into budget season, we, we put placeholders on some things. One of those was moving Montrose forward. So, we had a $200,000 placeholder of, you know, once we know what streets are going to be rebuilt, we then go through and look at all the sewer infrastructure to see if anything needs to be replaced on those streets, because we don't want to tear up a road twice. Fortunately, this year, all of the streets that were getting rebuilt, the sewers were in decent condition, and so, there's 200,000 that was, sits in the sewer capital fund and expended. So, you add those two together, and we're pretty close to the budget on this one. So, with that, we're comfortable, and, you know, given the condition of the pipe, it needs to be replaced, you know, there's, to push this one off is not really an outstanding condition. So, so with that, we are making a recommendation to move forward, and happy to answer any questions.
Scott, did we take in any consideration of the idea of undergrounding all of the utilities during this renovation and construction? Because that's something that I just, we went to a conference in Loveland, and one of the things that they had done in their downtown was undergrounding utilities to make these alley spaces more appealing and more useful. So, I'm just wondering if we have ever had that conversation about, I know we've talked about it, but...
So, we've been working on, knowing that Block 93 is kind of the next likely candidate for, or revitalization, we have that, that's something we've considered as part of the Block 93 alley design. So, that's, and that's kind of a pretty good grant project. So, the Block 93 project, the alley itself would come in, repave the alley, repave the parking lot, set up vendor spaces, looking at EV charging as well, new lighting, all of those things. Even on that one, undergrounding wasn't, it's, you know, it's possible to add to that, it'd be a good time to do it, because the sewer project won't tear up the alley wholesale. It's just going to be kind of localized pieces. So, it's, the best time to underground would be when you do replace the whole alley as part of that larger Block 93 project. But even then, some of these are so expensive, the way the electricals configure on a lot of these old buildings, a lot of the time, you end up going back into the meters or into the buildings at every single service, and you get into the, you know, easily into the hundreds, hundreds of thousands, if not millions, on some of these underground projects. And so, that's something I think definitely can be looked at with the Block 93 project if that project comes to fruition, and then those decisions can be made at that point to feel that it's worth it and cross that bridge at that time. But we didn't include any of that as part of the sewer project, or consider it part of the sewer project.
I think that explanation that it's not a wholesale tear-up of the alley is a good explanation of why we're not considering that at this time.
On Cascade, there's some businesses that are on Cascade. Are there any sewer caps, do you know, on, on the backside of those businesses that perhaps we might look at making sure that those things are, I know it's not necessarily the city's responsibility for, for replacing those, but maybe while we're there, inspecting them to make sure, hey, you know what, this really needs to be done, maybe talk to the owners, and I know there are some funds available through different downtown improvement or whatever that, that could be used to, to take care of those things.
Certainly, yeah. So, this is kind of a unique kind of basin area. This is the end of the line. We're Block 93, it used to run back up here, but we've confirmed there are no active services into Cascade. So, this will be kind of the end of the line running west. Overall, there's 20-plus services on all of them. We typically work with the owners as we get into there, help them while we have it open, see what's there, and then if they're interested in replacement, it'll never be cheaper than right now, kind of thing. And, you know, we've already got it exposed, because we had to find it and expose it. So, pretty common that we work with the, the business owners during that, so if they wanted to, they can take advantage of having that contractor there and mobilized. So, that's pretty much on every sewer project, that's pretty typical, even if we get into residential areas. And it's, and they take advantage, I'd say, like the Sunnyside Mesa project, for example, about 10% maybe replaced. They're like, oh, I've been meaning to do this. While you're here, can you do it? And they can usually run them all right up the line and back burst it back and do it, or remaining too cheaper than what they would do if they were to do it in the 100s.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Outstanding. Thanks, Scott. And next is our street light upgrade project and DMEA MOU authorization. Public Works Director Jim Shide.
I have DMEA reps that are with us here in the audience, Shelby Bear and Rod Geiger. We've been working closely with them to develop an MOU and kind of get this project started. So, I'll go through the details of this project and kind of the intention for this year and then move forward. And then, if there's any questions at the end, obviously Shelby and Rod are here to answer any questions that you guys can start. So, we'll start off by showing this map. You may have seen this before. This, this is a map of our existing streetlights throughout Montrose. And so, the, they're all different colors, there are different types of lights. The red lights are an LED light. The yellow and blues on this are a mercury vapor or a high-pressure sodium, so an older style fixture. And this project is intended to replace all of the old-style fixtures to an LED fixture over the next four years approximately. Doing about a quarter of them in 2023, that's what this project is, is aimed at. We have about 1,900 streetlights total, and about 500 of those have already been converted to an LED. So, we're about 1,500 left to be converted to an LED. fifteen-hundred left to be converted to an LED. This does not include our decorative fixtures downtown. So those are actually a city-owned and city-powered light fixture ones we see along Main Street and here on, on Cascade. These, those are a decorative city fixture, and it's not included in this project. What we're looking at is a, what we call a Cobra head, or a, this is the LED fixture. You may recognize these. There are, you know, five-hundred of them around town already, so you may have seen these and noticed them. But these are a Cobra head LED fixture. And all, the goal is again to get all of the streetlights replaced after this style of fixture. So the reasons why we would go through this project, this is the, this is the map that we've been working with DMEA on as far as organizing the lights by street type. But I'll go through a few of the reasons why we would propose this project initially and the intention for the next few years. First off is a financial benefit. So the return on investment for the city for buying the fixtures upfront is about two-point-three years. So that's very short, considering the amount we spent on electrical costs. So that means we can buy the fixture this year, and the amount we will save in energy at each fixture over the next two-point-three years will pay for what we, we spent on that fixture. If we were to do all of the light fixtures at once, it would be about four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. We're proposing, and we budgeted to do a quarter of that, so a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars this year. If we were to do all of them, we would be saving just under two-hundred-thousand dollars a year in electrical costs. We would be able to do around three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred fixtures in 2023 with what we budgeted, depending on the fixture type. So there are a lot of different costs, along the different wattages per fixture, but we're about three-hundred-and-fifty fixtures we can do this year. Another reason is just energy efficiency. So obviously, an LED fixture can put out the same amount of light at a, using less energy. So it's just a pure efficiency reason. Another reason would be our lineless and dark sky principles. So there are several principles associated with dark skies, responsible outdoor lighting, and this project aligns with any of those. Such as useful light, light having a clear purpose, and not be utilized where it's not needed. A shielded light, which is basically best practice in lighting anymore, but definitely the goal of the dark sky principles is to have all of the lights shielded and only directed where needed. Using lower light levels where possible, and that's where this plan does address that. On some of our residential streets, we were using a lower-level light, because it's not intended to light the entire corridor like a Main Street or a Townsend would be. So we're able to use a lower lumen fixture on residential streets. And then also using a lower color light. So some of the traditional lights, the mercury vapors and the high-pressure sodiums, actually have that kind of lower color, more of a yellow color. And so some of the LEDs that we're proposing, the residential streets, have that similar lower color. And what that does is keep the glare down. And again, it says the same lumen output, the same amount of light being put out, but it's at a different color, and it's not that harsh white.
Like a warmer color? Like when you buy those Christmas lights, the difference between like bright white and warm white?
Yep, exactly. And it's meant, well, from a dark sky perspective, it doesn't reflect or glare as, as well, and so it helps protect the skies. But also, in a residential area, it's, it's still putting out the same amount of light, but in a lower temperature or lower color light. So speaking of dark skies, didn't want to confuse us with the International Dark Sky Community. That's a very different program that has a lot of different restrictions that apply to public and private light. And so this project is not intended to achieve a dark sky community status, but again, is aligning with many of the dark sky principles that are just in response to light. And another reason is street organization. You mentioned you've gone out with these lights, that they'd be different types of lights based on street type. So the, some of our newer developments are already this way, where you can see the different light types depending on what street type you're on. And so doing that throughout town will help organize our street network and be able to identify what type of street you're on. You know, Park Avenue would look different than South Third Street, for example. So in a residential street, you have a different color of light than a minor arterial. So it's helping to organize the streets where, again, if we go back to that map a little ways now, they're, they're kind of mismatched all over the place, and you can't really use the lights to, to identify what type of street you're on. This project also does achieve goals from our comprehensive plan, Envision 2040, goal HE seven, Energy and Water Conservation. The objective to reduce light pollution by promoting dark skies throughout the community. This, this project aligns perfectly with that goal. So what we're authorizing is an MOU with DMEA. And basically, it's, it's agreeing that DMEA would install the LED fixtures per this lighting plan up to a hundred-and-ten-thousand in 2023. And then also inventory those fixtures as necessary. The city would obviously pay for those fixtures, changed out by DMEA. And doing that instead of waiting, waiting out for it to be changed out on their own. So DMEA, as it currently stands, would change the existing mercury vapor and high-pressure sodium fixtures to an LED as they burn out, which we've seen, those are very long-lasting fixtures, and that could be twenty-plus years. We're really unknown for the rest of the fixtures to kind of fail before they'd be replaced. Assuming it's twenty years, that's obviously much longer than our return on investment would be if we, when we go ahead and go forward with it now by paying for the fixtures upfront. We know that within a couple of years, we'll have that return on investment. So we did budget for this project in 2023 for a hundred-and-ten-thousand. We do intend to continue this project for the next up to four years, depending on budget approval, of course. But the intention would be to do a similar size for four years in a row. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then of course, if DMEA is here as well, if you have any questions for them.
One thing I'm curious about is that we have a lot of our older neighborhoods that may or may not have had a streetlight. Are we even considering adding streetlights to some of these older neighborhoods?
Not right now. No, we're not part of this project. So in residential areas, we're really trying to focus on, you know, the purpose of light and why is it there. Most of the time in a residential area, it's to identify an intersection. So it's not intended to light an entire corridor like it would be in a, you know, a different type of street, you know, a major arterial. So streetlights can be added, and we have, but we try to look at really the purpose of it. Again, we don't intend to light the entire street. Now, if there's an intersection that's not identified very well, and that's really where the residential lights come into play, is identifying an intersection, we can add them. That's, there's, oftentimes, there's complications of getting power to them. But that's where we work with DMEA, and they have added lights for us in the past. We could do that if one comes to, to the need as far as identifying an intersection or something. We'd say it's separate from this project, but on a nasdaq basis, we can add lights.
And a couple of quick clarifications. If residents of a community or a neighborhood want to add a streetlight, they can certainly feel free to contact DMEA. And I don't know if you guys would let, let citizens kind of petition their neighborhood and put one in, or, but it would be at their expense and not at the city's expense?
And we want to look at, at the purpose behind it, you know, because there are definitely some, some that would want a light on, you know, every, in front of every house, and then others that don't want any lights at all. So we really need to be careful about where they're, where they're put, make sure we're strategic about it, and that they're serving that purpose.
And I don't think they would contact DMEA or contact you.
Correct. We work, yeah, they come through the city, and we work with DMEA to, first off, sometimes, sometimes it's complicated. There may not be power near. There may be overhead power, which may be difficult to get to a certain area. So it seems like every time we talk about it, it's a very unique situation. So yeah, we, we generally start the conversation to kind of figure out the why behind it, and then work with DMEA to get into the technical of how can, how could it happen.
Great.
How about those solar lighting?
Well, on our trail systems, where we're temporarily using solar lights right now, we haven't branched out into streetlights. We do have one solar streetlight, actually, and it was for the same reason. It was very difficult to get power to or very expensive. And so we did, we do have one solar streetlight. It's been doing okay. We're still monitoring to see how it could be, you know, what kind of option it is for the future. But I think the best use of our solar lights is on the trail system. That's where the electrical infrastructure is very difficult to maintain. And we've been doing very well for that, kind of lower-level pedestrian-level lighting. Probably not tested as well here in Montrose at a higher level for a street intersection light, just because a lot of areas are shaded. And I think of like Main Street, would be difficult to light with solar. And also, in a lot of areas, it's critical that we have lighting. So we wouldn't want to install light that may not work well on a February morning when it's, it's been cloudy for a week.
This is a great return on investment. I'm glad to see we're doing this.
Also, DMEA owns all the streetlights. We don't own, except maybe one solar one.
And we, and we, the city pays for the electricity to turn them on.
So we pay for the electricity, DMEA owns the streetlights. So this is a real benefit to the city, because it's going to save us a, a lot of money shifting to LED lights.
And you answered this when I asked you before the meeting, but I think it's worth noting, why aren't we maybe doing all of them right now, if it's going to save us money?
Yeah, so a couple of reasons. One is just initial budget of being able to budget over this over time, rather than wanting to lump sum upfront. So for budget reasons, but also for just feasibility of install, fixture availability, and then also working with DMEA. They have to, you know, get their crews lined up to basically add a project to their list, and obviously, they're very busy. So adding, installing an additional three-hundred-and-fifty fixtures this year is quite a ask. So we wouldn't want it to multiply that times four and do it all in this single year.
It's not as easy as changing a light bulb. It's the whole fixture.
It's the whole fixture, correct.
You have any questions? All right. Do we want to take about a five-minute break, that we can take a bio-break, or do we want to just keep going on? All right, very good. So the public safety complex, solar panels, add alternate award recommendation. Again, Jim Scheid.
So we have three parts to this discussion today. We'll, we'll talk about the cover parking structure at the new police department and the next steps there, our overall budget of the Montrose Public Safety Complex project, and also the solar panel add alternate. Those all kind of go together. So we'll start with the cover parking structure update. So those, initially, the install of the cover parking structure was just not done correctly. There was some of the columns that were installed out of, out of plumb, and the style of column are not easily adjustable. It means removal and replacement. So we've identified that early on when they first installed it, and it basically just did not meet our standards for quality. But through that, before we had them removed and replaced, we kind of wanted to investigate what options were for a full redesign and replacement of those covered structures, or do we want to just put them back in nasdaq? So we, we did some design work and some investigation into the costs of that. And ultimately, any upgrade to those meant a new foundation system, which became quite expensive, in the three-to-four-hundred-thousand dollar range for basically any modification of the structure. So because of costs and time, you know, selected the option to stick with what we have, except for replacing, removing, replacing, and making sure they're installed correctly. And that, that's a zero-dollar cost to the city.
To the city. They're paying for that.
That's correct, yes. So we, we paid for a completed structure, which at this time is not. So it's on the consultant to remove, replace at their cost. So we're moving forward with that option. Again, that's a zero-dollar cost to the city. This work would likely be in late May, early June, and should be completed in the month of June. They're estimating about a one-month term around there. So the reason why this plays into the conversation is because that allows us to look at what was truly left in the project as far as available funds at the end of the project. That was kind of the last big-ticket item to be completed as part of the project. So we're using that to kind of look back in the funding pot of what was approved of the project. So, so the overall project budget review, our overall project costs, including soft costs, owner expenses, and hard costs, we came in about twenty-point-five million overall on project. And that, again, that includes a lot of things. A lot of soft costs are kind of those small items. Many of those came to council over a span of a couple of years. But for example, those include things like our design team, technical advisors, owner's rep, geotech and CMT, servers, switches, acts on cameras, furniture, and office equipment. So quite a long list of multiple things. Again, most of those came before council for approval because of the size of those contracts. Also, at thirty-seven thousand square feet, this puts overall project at about five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. This is very good, considering the project began in a pandemic of unpredictable prices on materials and labor. So that's actually a very good completion number, considering we're, we're seeing other projects of similar type and size here in our region, over nine-hundred dollars a square foot. So five-fifty was a success. So of the seventeen-point-eight-million-dollar CNBC award that we approved in August of 2021, that included the owner's contingency. And of that contingency, there's about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars remaining in that. So it's unspent money that's part of the project, originally approved as part of that CNBC and owner's contingency award, but has not been spent. So it's remaining available. And that brings us right to the next topic of the add alternate of solar panels on the cover parking structures. So this has been an add alternate since very early on in the project and was not accepted earlier for multiple reasons. One, we weren't as sure where we were at funding-wise. There was a lot of unknowns going on. And so we did, we selected a few add alternates earlier in the project, but did not prevent that out of this one. Mainly, one other reason is because it can be added at the end of the project with no additional cost. If we would have accepted any other alternate this late in the project, it would have cost us money to implement it. Where the solar, there's really no cost of implementation now. So other alternates that we're accepting, seat wall planters in front of the building, terrazzo in the lobby, and even the cover parking structures themselves were an add alternate that we accepted on quite early in the project. So as far as the solar options go, there, there are several options as far as size. We have four cover parking structures. And so if we, we can cover one of them, we can cover two of them, or we've covered all four of them. We really have our options available there. The pricing difference, it breaks down just about evenly as far as if we do all four, it's just over two-hundred grand. If we do one, we're just over fifty grand. So it does break down to just about a quarter of the cost if we only do a quarter of the panels. I, we are recommending we do the cover all four panels, all four of the cover parking structures, one for efficiency reasons and the amount that it'll supplement of the energy used. So how that works is it's, it's tied into the, the public safety complex after the meter, and it supplements what's used on a daily basis. On a sunny day and a normal operation for the facility, it would replace about twenty-five percent of the energy used by the facility. And that's, this is if we go with the panels system that covers all four, all four or cover parking. And so in a, in a return on investment, if that, if it consistently supplements about twenty-five percent of the energy used, we'd be looking at about a twelve-to-fifteen-year return on investment of the initial cost of the structure, which actually is very good. That's, and that's also assuming that we see a fair standard increase in the cost of electricity in the future. They're hard to predict, but over the last few years, they've been, you know, three-to-five percent increase. If we were to see a larger increase in the future, obviously, then this solar option starts to make more sense. So and the return on investment would be shorter. But for purposes of this, we can assume a twelve-to-fifteen-year return on investment. This project also aligns with goals in our comprehensive plan, Envision 2040, same goal we talked about earlier, encourage energy efficiency, renewable energy, water conservation, and programs to reduce utility costs and improve them rather than help the community. Again, this, this lines with that very well. If we like to go with the two-hundred-thousand-dollar option, this would leave approximately a hundred-and-fifty thousand as unspent project budget in the public safety fund, and could be used for future public safety projects. This portion of the projects, the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousandths remaining, it is included in what was previously authorized by council, but was not specifically budgeted in 2023. So it's technically an unbudgeted project if it were to be approved, but there is funding for it in the public, public safety fund. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And if, if we like to go with a different option other than the, the... And if we like to go with a different option other than the $200,000 option I proposed, I'll actually need to know so that I can prepare that in a packet.
I got a few questions. Batteries, batteries seem from my experiences in construction that they don't have the same life cycle as the panels do. And batteries can be a very expensive endeavor to replace. And that those things, again, they don't last as long as the panels. And panels, the last thing I read about them are only about 25 to maybe 30% efficient. Which, and their life cycle is around 20 years also. So we're looking at perhaps between 15 and 20 years of having to replace the whole system. And I was just curious if any of that was taken into consideration when you're saying, okay, we need four panels and we're going to have to replace them. And I know 15 years seems like a good payback time. But at the end of 15 years, when we're break even, are we putting in new panels and new batteries and starting the whole process again? Which means that, that we're not really paying for this product, at least not yet, based on my, what information I have about solar panels. And is that a good, right now, is that a good use of city funds?
Yes, I can answer some of that. So there are no batteries as part of this system. So it's using the grid as its storage system. So it does not use any storage of batteries or other onsite. It, it would, again, it supplements what's used in electricity. If for some reason the facility were not using as much electricity on that particular day, it would backfeed onto the grid and use the, the grid as its storage point, actually spinning the meter backwards. We don't anticipate that to happen just because of the typical use of the building. But, but so there is no storage or battery system as part of this. And that, the, the good side of that is that it's a much more cost effective way of doing it. It, the battery systems usually are in a system that is meant to be off grid and to where it's independent. And that way, if the grid were to shut down, you have your own power generation system. This is not that. This, this is still dependent on the grid, but supplements the energy usage only. And then as far as the lifespan of the panels, now I can't speak to the typical life of these panels, but they are of a commercial grade. So it's a different panel than you may see on a, on a house, mainly because of the efficiency of these panels. So this is the commercial grade solar panel system. And I, off the top of my head, I don't know the typical lifespan, and I could look that up. But I will say it is a commercial grade system.
Okay, thanks.
One thing I might add there too is the general trend of cost of solar panels is going down. So when the time comes to replace, you'd likely, you know, probably be a retrofit at that point. Because a lot of that infrastructure will still be there. And you're, you know, maybe you're half the cost or something at that point. And you're still in that positive ROI piece of this better.
Yeah.
Jim, we have a lot of electronics in the police cars. Do we have a way to plug them in to help keep them charged up or anything?
Well, this time, none of the police vehicles are, are charged that way. So there, there is infrastructure in the area for charge stations for an electronic vehicle, which we don't have any at this time. But, so no, there's not a way to plug in the, the cars right now.
When we approve this project, when would it start and when would it finish?
So likely, it would be completed this fall. We would be, we, we should line actually really well with the covered parking structures being rebuilt in June and be able to start just after that. So we're anticipating a July start and I would say late summer to fall time completion.
We're currently using solar panels on our wastewater treatment plant to help power some of that building, right? So this isn't our first?
There is a separate system out there that actually isn't functional right now.
Okay.
It was a prototype at the time and tested. It's actually not functional right now.
Yeah, that was a long time ago. So this is way newer technology.
Yeah, yeah, definitely a different type of solar panel too. That was a reflective system that focuses on a single photocell. And this is, this is a true panel.
Right, the industry went away from that for reflective on it, yeah.
And there is some industry for that still remaining and seeing it applied in other areas. But our system was early on in that and was again, kind of a test. I don't know a whole lot about it other than there was a prototype at the time. And we were kind of part of that testing system.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jim. Moving on to item F, the City Hall facade project discussion.
Can I present?
Jim, you're up again.
All right, I have a presentation on this one as well.
And there was nothing in our packet on this?
Oh, I'm back on. Nope, no item, no item in the packet on this.
So here's what we're doing, but there's nothing in the packet.
Oh, okay.
All right. So today I want to discuss the options we have with our City Hall facade project or what we've been calling Phase Three. The, this was presented back in February this year, the full scope of the facade project. And due to the costs, we're coming back to present options and discuss this project further. But before we get to the cost of the project, I think there's a few items I wanted to cover. I think they, they could play into your decision about how we move forward with this project, so. So I want to talk about how we got here. So we started with a condition and needs assessment of the old City Hall, our previous building. And it ultimately recommended extensive mechanical, electrical, structural upgrades that would have been quite complicated, man, it's a historic building. And available space was an issue as well as funding. So even if we had renovated the old City Hall space, we knew we were at the capacity of that building as far as space goes. Even with a re layout, we were, we were looking at the, trying to save as much space as we possibly could. And fortunately, at that same time, the new City Hall building, which the former is Wells Fargo, became available. And then we purchased that building. Now, this building has two times the square footage of old City Hall. And what, that's one of the things that really made this project feasible.
And it came with a parking lot?
It came with a parking lot.
That was not available to purchase separately.
That's right. So including the purchase price, we could purchase it and renovate the interior and upgrade the facade for less than it would have cost to renovate the old smaller City Hall. And now that we're further into the project and have some of the design and estimates complete, we're able to put numbers to those intuitions of kind of cost efficiencies. So at the current, currently with the purchase and Phase One and Two, which is the interior work we've done, we're at 4.1 million total or $124 a square foot. If we were to do the full scope of the facade project, as we talked about in February, we would have been, we would be at 7.5 million or $225 a square foot. And so again, comparing that to other options we may have, renovating the old City Hall, building a new structure, some of those types of things, that's a very low comparison. Again, we talked about the public safety complex at 550. This is obviously half of that. And we're seeing substantially higher than that on every project. And renovations are not necessarily cheaper. There are definitely, I would say, City Hall's, the old City Hall is an example of renovation can be just as expensive, if not more, than building a new structure. So these are the preliminary motivations for the project and why we even went down the route of investigating the facade work. And so we began the process of generating concepts of the exterior with Blythe Group. So they were our architect on the interior as well as the public safety complex. And they're, they're here with us still. They stuck it out. They're still here listening. And so we, as part of their design contract for the interior, we had in there for them to produce a concept level drawing of the exterior. And that is, I'll show you a few of these options. This is one example that they, they created. So to start off that conversation, Blythe did create an A, B, C option. And kind of reviewing that with city staff to kind of hone in on the direction that we would like them to take the overall design. So I'll talk to a few of these and how we ended up at the concept level we were at. So this is Option A. Looks a lot like it does now as far as having large, the large windows remain. Parapet heights all remain as is. A updated entrance feature, but not larger. And then some different brick and stonework and additional windows. That was one thing we, we added, or we requested as part of the project was additional windows. So you can see on the left side of the top figure there, additional windows. And the same with the bottom image, which is the west side of the structure.
Can you go back one slide again so we can just compare and remind ourselves that there's currently, there's no windows on the side and are there no windows?
Correct, there's no window, only windows are the big windows in the front there on the, the western side. So all of this-
The eastern side of the front has no windows, right?
Okay.
Correct, yep. Yep, the only the large panels there on the right hand side of the front is the only windows that exist now. And so this is concept level only, obviously, there's not much detail here. It was more of a, obviously, a concept of, you know, what level do we want this facade to go to? So this being Option A. B being, you can see a larger entrance feature, more identifiable entrance. And different window types, but again, kind of looking at adding windows on the left turn portion, left side. And then adding over the existing large windows that are on the west side of kind of covering those and, and putting a facade over those. Same thing with more level detail on the, on the west side as well. And then Option C being raised parapet height across the building. So this would replicate some of the other historic buildings on Main Street, the real high parapet across the whole building. And then trying to break up the front facade with different types of finishes to, again, break that up to where you're not walking by one monolithic building. So and as you can see, each level or each A, B, C, you know, increased complexity and price, obviously. We didn't price these options, but as you can tell, the more complex the project gets, the more detail, the more costly it would be. So we, as staff, we selected kind of Option A basically with a few features of Option B. So it was obviously a mixture of several things, elements that were identifiable that we would want to include in the project with feeling comfortable with the level of complexity. Not wanting to go as far as Option C, but Option A being the, the general direction with some elements that we noticed out of B and others that we wanted to include in it. So through the process of discussing these options with Blythe and through the whole facade discussion, we came up with several goals for the project that, that we wanted the next step of the concept to meet. And removing of the old white fluted block, I think that's one that we've talked about from the beginning, of wanting to get rid of that block. And this, this goal does that. We did want an identifiable entrance feature that ties it into the civic campus, relates to other structures like the old City Hall, the courthouse, Elks Building, things like that. Having an identifiable brick and stone style entrance feature. Installing additional windows, as we talked about, into the workspace inside. One, it makes a better environment for working interior, but it also helps the exterior kind of break up that monolithic single wall. So it's from an outside perspective and an inside perspective. Corner feature, which we may see more on like an Option B of upgrading the corner at Cascade and Main. On the, this will be on the far right hand side. And that's to just increase the presence on Main Street and relate back to the history of the, of the location and also make it very identifiable as far as historic building or historic portion of Main Street. And then also utilizing alternative building materials. And that's where some of the metal facade that we discussed previously comes into play. It's actually a much lower cost option, but a more modern feature, but is a much lower cost than a typical brick and stone type of facade. And then also adapting the alleyway behind the building for as a pedestrian corridor was another goal with the project. So that, that is as Blythe took these levels, kind of took our input and some of the goals of the project into the next level of the concept, which is what, which is what we saw a couple of months ago here at work session and discussed this, this concept. We, we went into quite a level of detail in this. Blythe discussed a lot of all the different elements on this at that previous work session. So I hope you've all got to see it. I didn't know many of you weren't here for that meeting. But I believe it was recorded, so I hope you got to see some of that. I wasn't going to go into all the full description of this again. But it does achieve those goals that we, we talked about and identified early on with that, those concepts A, B, and C. So we did utilize our CMGC contract with FCI to have them estimate this project. Again, is that at concept level, so very preliminary pricing? It's very difficult to price this. There's obviously no detail, so they don't know, they don't know a lot. A lot of attachment methods, the weatherproofing and insulation. And like, there's a lot of details that are not in this. And so there was a substantial contingency applied to this for multiple reasons. Escalation from design contingencies, construction contingencies, a lot of things to make sure we had that covered from a budget standpoint if it were to move forward. And so I think this is where we discussed last time, you know, a couple of months ago. And as we were talking about the overall project budget, I think that's where the hesitation or the wheels kind of came off the project. And getting us back to today, we're kind of starting over at that point and like to have more of a discussion with you all about what, what direction you'd like for the project. And I have, I can present, and I also want to hand out a handout of, a breakdown of the costs and goals of the project. So we can kind of talk through both of those things. So let me, let me hand this out real quick. Hand a couple down that way. And then would you mind passing that around?
Hey, Jim?
Yeah.
Could you clarify one thing? What we're looking at right now, is that the option A with some of the option B?
Correct. Yep, that is, it's kind of a mixture. There was several elements, I think, mostly A and B. The corner feature probably came from some of that we saw in the option C. But the overall, you know, complexity of the, of the overall facade was kind of a between A and B option. And yeah, this is where we, the most detailed concept we have created so far.
Jim, can this, when we're looking at these different options, is that something that we sort of have a big cost right up front? Is that something we can do in phases?
Yeah, it could be. I think you lose, once you start that type of project, removing facade, it can be broken down into pieces. But I think you start to lose some efficiency and mobilization charges with starting and stopping. So would not be very efficient to do it that way, but it could be a lower cost way to do a portion of it. And then, and then the next portion a year later or something, that can be done. But it would just create a, maybe even an odd look in the meantime of one portion that's been done and the other portion that hasn't been. And again, you'd lose some efficiency in that constructability of, of piecing it out. But I do want to talk to you, I think we have many options of what, what we could do. But I want to talk about this price breakdown and help explain some of this. So, so the first line that shows a facade related running total. This is intended to, to show what, how the project could progress. So there's obviously a lower cost. We could do just a sandblast and paint, which could be our, kind of our lowest, lower options of, of the project. All the way up to if we did the full scope with, including the alley side improvement. So this is everything we've talked about at work session previously would be about 3.4. Now, that's a budget number. That, that includes soft costs, hard costs, owner provided items, and contingencies. So this is a budget number, again, intended to include all of those things.
And that would make the total cost of the entire project what?
3.4 for the facade related portion.
But adding the purchase of the building is-
Oh, yeah, this would put us at 7.5. Oh. Yeah, this would put us at 7.5 if we went with this full version here. So the reason this, what I've done here is separated out some of these projects that aren't necessarily facade-related. So the very first column, column, this has been new pedestrian lights, sidewalks. So this is not necessarily facade-related and something that I would suggest we budget for anyway. Now, this is a sidewalk replacement and new lights out front, just dressing up the front of the building, unrelated to the facade. So that's why I've pulled it out of the total that you may have seen previously. So I would say that this $250,000 would be a street-related project, according to the sidewalk and lights. And then also one other item we was in the design was a large digital kiosk. That also can be done independently of the facade, unrelated. It could be done either way if the facade happens or not. That could be more of a community engagement style meeting or style project that would involve noticing of public meetings, other events, and those sort of things, larger digital kiosk out on the corner.
That's part of the wave lining.
Yep.
So we're focusing on just the facade?
Yeah.
Is what we're doing?
Exactly. And then the-
Just for clarification, looking at this, this isn't, this isn't the running total of each of these items would add that much more. These are the total price for the project with that added into that component?
It's a running total, so-
Because if you look, I mean, if you add all the numbers up, it obviously comes up to a whole bunch more than 3.4.
Right. Yeah. It is, it's a running total. So that means as you progress, that's the cost of the project. So if we were to do all of these things as far as, including the lower-level items, as you get to the brick and stone stage, so that's 2.7 overall budget for everything below that.
Okay. So for example, what you're saying is if we do sandblasting and painting and signage and lighting, that's 350,000. If we add stucco and metal and do sandblast painting, signage, and lighting, we're 1.8. If we add windows, and that still includes stucco, metal, sandblasting, painting, signage, and lighting, 2.1. So each one is-
Yes. And the reason I did it that way is because we can't really do one without the other, right?
Sure. It's not a menu where we can choose brick and stone, but not-
Yeah.
Okay.
It was meant to be that we could talk about the overall budget of where we'd like to land, you know, so if there's a number in your mind of where you'd like to land budget-wise, we can kind of lay that into this line somewhere. But if you go down to the goals achieved, that may be your other motivation. If there's something that you wanted to achieve a goal-wise as far as a project, we can also line that up here too. So if it was really important to, let's say, complement and tie into the civic campus buildings with similar design elements, that, if that's a goal you'd really like to see achieved, then that comes along with a 2.7 million-dollar project associated with it. So kind of looking at it from two angles of, one, being cost, cost-wise, if that's where you'd like to look at and focus on where you'd like to land cost-wise, or again, if you want to look at goals of the project, we can kind of use a spreadsheet to hone in on either one of those and come up with a direction. Let me, one other thing, and we talk about the roof a little bit, because that was an item included in the total before. And so overall, project budget-wise, is all of these things included are no different than what we talked about previously, but I have just pulled items out. The roof was a major one, around $800,000 for a roof replacement. The existing roof is in good condition, but it's near the end of its life. It's about 20 years old. It's in really good shape, but if we were to add some of these larger features like that corner and entrance feature, we're changing the parapet heights and we're cutting into that roof, and if we're cutting into a 20-year-old roof, I recommend that we replace it at that time. So if we don't do the facade project, we would need to replace the roof in the next five years likely. We need to start budgeting for that for a future project, but unrelated from the facade. The only reason it was included is because if we do that facade, I recommend we do the roof with that project, right? So that's why it's separated here, depending on how the facade portion of this project goes. If we get to the level of doing the 3.1 million-dollar corner entrance feature, then I would recommend we budget through a facility project of replacing the roof at that same time. Does that make sense? So I think I've covered all these items on here. I guess ultimately, I'd like to open it up for discussion with you all to see where you'd like to see this project go and ultimately trying to get direction on which area to kind of hone in on, and then obviously I would go with whatever changes there may be, going back to our design team and our construction team to possibly modify our concept and price estimating. And then I would come back to a future work session with another recommendation based on how you all give that direction now.
This chart is great. I really appreciate that. It kind of explains where the different costs come from and which, and what you get when you add costs in terms of the goal achieved, so we can decide, again, what goals are most important and what goals we want to consider spending money on. Is there a reason these two columns are highlighted?
They are. I was going to explain, I forgot about that. So yes, I did highlight those, so the 1.8 million and the 2.1, because if we were to go with one of those options, my concern is there that we would remove a facade like a white-fluted block, which is ugly, but it is a very durable, long-term, commercial building facade. If we, if we went with these options in this range, we may reduce the quality of the facade. It may look better, but if we go with a stucco style or something similar of that nature in the facade, we may actually reduce the quality of the facade on the building. And so I wouldn't recommend that we stay in this range, that kind of, if we sandblast and paint, we keep the block, but it may have a new look to it. Or I think we need to get all the way to that brick and stone level, because in between there, I would feel like we may actually reduce the quality of the facade.
So by adding the windows, we're going to compromise the general structure?
Yeah. We'd be cutting into it, and we could, again, there's other styles of facade we could do. Stucco is an example, but not the only option. I'm just saying a lower-cost facade, but I think in doing that, we would reduce the quality of the facade.
So are you saying that to go beyond the 350 level, we really need to progress to the 2.7?
Correct. That's my suggestion, yes.
But they are up.
Yeah.
So what is the feasibility of just starting and just doing the sandblasting, doing the 350 level, and seeing what they're, what it looks like, and then going back and reevaluating our position later?
That is an option. Yep. I would say, yeah, that comes with, you know, upgraded signage and lighting, some other minor things, but yeah, I would go back to, I don't really even have a concept of what that could look like, but obviously, that's why we have BLYTH on our team, and we'd go back to them with, you know, that concept. If we'd like to stick closer to this range budget-wise, and we'd like the, you know, paint scheme or other things, we'd like to sandblast and paint the building, and have them help us decide what that could look like.
But if we did that, and for whatever reason it was not satisfactory or we didn't like it, we basically wasted $350,000, correct?
Depending on what level we went to. So if we were to change to, you know, the larger corner and entrance feature type in the future, then, then nothing would remain as far as lighting, signage, all those things would be replaced again. The actual cost of the sandblast and paint would be probably about half of that. I would say, you know, 200 of that was probably associated with the sandblast and paint, so that would be the part truly lost. If, it depends on what we would upgrade to later, you know, if the signage remained, then obviously that's not lost, but depending on what level we would change in the future, a good portion of the 350 would likely be lost. Yeah.
Well, I think the sandblasting and the painting is going to get us a little more to where we were originally looking at, to kind of blend in with the rest of the community down there versus what the white is right now. So it looks like to me that, that gives us some options if we get that part of it done, we blend it in, and then later on.
But blend it in, I'm just, I'm kind of curious what blended in means, because everyone says they don't like the big white building. And, but if we paint it tan, is it then just a big tan building?
No, if we sandblast it though, then all of that block would be its natural color, whatever that may be. What is that color of that block under that?
What's it going to look like once we sandblast it? We don't know.
You know, I don't, I am not sure. There was one stone that had been replaced on that west side from a roof drain, I believe, that was repaired, and there was a block shown there. It was kind of a speckled look, but honestly, I don't know what's under that rest of that block. It could, it could be mismatched. It might, who knows? And we wouldn't know until we sand-
But I don't assume that it'd be mismatch. I think they'd be all the same colored block. It's standard construction, but it'd be interesting to see exactly what it looks like.
Ed, you had talked originally about how it used to be rounded, and one time it was a little soda fountain inside there. Do you remember what the original brickwork looked like?
If my memory serves me right, there used to be glass on the side, and, and again, this was 50 years ago, and some windows, and I don't, I think it was a red-colored brick, but-
But the brick is under that block.
Yeah. There is some brick there.
It's not a continuous, it's not like we can peel off that, oh hey, there's a beautiful brick.
No, we were hopeful that we would be able to use it as kind of a backdrop to the facade, that we would kind of in a way overlay it with the newer facade over it, but being able to use that, what's under there as a backdrop to the new facade. Still kind of unknown what exactly is there. We've done some investigation to look back there, but until it comes off, we really don't know what we're getting.
That originally was more than one building. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's been added on to and renovated multiple times, some big additions in 60s and even the 40s, but prior to 1940s is when it had that different look to it as far as the turret on the corner and the rounded, the rounded corner, I believe, was, I believe that was in the 40s.
Build a del to look at their bank where there looks like what this used to.
Yeah.
There's a picture of this one in the lobby.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
I don't know if I want to spend a whole bunch of money making it look like it specifically looked in the past, and I think that, that's pure aesthetics and not functionality, and I'm kind of a function kind of guy, but I do want it to look nice.
Can we lean into-
There is some function to it, because if we do the sandblasting, then all the workers along those walls have no windows, so that's a function.
Yeah, but adding windows, I understand, and I see the functionality of adding windows. But I mean, on the corner, making that, all of the corner, redoing the turret and all that, I don't, I don't see, I don't have a desire to pursue that. Okay? That's just me.
I mean, the current style that was chosen and it was built is, would we date it to the 60s? I mean, is it, I mean, we know it's over the, we know it's historic, it's-
Yeah, that was 60s version. It actually used to have windows all the way down the east side as well, where it's all solid white block. Now, that actually at one point was when large storefront windows all the way down that side as well. But yeah, in the 60s, the latest renovations, when it changed the look, it is now. Exterior-wise, it's been unchanged since the, yeah, mid 60s.
Yeah. I just wonder if we can lean into what it is. Instead of trying to take a 60s building and make it look like it was built-
In the 30s.
In the 40s.
Yeah. I don't know. If we can lean into what it is and accentuate that. I mean, it is historic. It's just a different, it's not necessarily how the rest of our downtown looks. I don't know. Now I'm throwing a curve ball. Sorry.
Yeah, but there's other buildings in downtown that are historical, but they've changed the facade, the roof pitches and stuff, so I'm leaning more toward the roof and maybe the streetscaping to make it, and maybe the sandblasting and painting it more mellow-colored to match the existing buildings and color.
My hesitation with the roof then, though, is that if we sandblast it, find out it's just ugly as sin, and then decide to go back in, if we fix the roof now, then we'll be cutting into a brand-new roof.
No, I wasn't insinuating we'd fix the roof right now, but whatever we do should, in my opinion, let's take care of the roof. If we're going to add anything, add to it in the future, solar, any air conditioning or anything, it's all going to have to be done on the roof anyway, and so-
The roof's got, I was saying, the roof's got about five years at least left in it.
Yeah, at least. It would not be on our immediate replacement schedule. It's in good condition. It's just if we're cutting into it on a larger scale, that's when we should replace it. So I would say a five-year timeline is when we need to start putting it on our radar. So if we were to do any version of this other than those, you know, cutting into that roof, it could be done, and then the roof, again, would be separate by years.
The structural, the structural integrity of that block, I noticed that you have girder beams going across steel, is, is that the structure that's actually holding the block up, or is that just part of the-
I may have to lean on BLYTH. I don't think so. I don't believe that that, the channel we see in the facade is structural. I believe there's block wall behind that. I don't know if we've done enough investigation to say for sure, but it's quite a strange facade in general to see it like that, but again, without taking stuff off, sometimes we don't know what's back there.
Well, if that beam is structural, then adding the windows under it would compromise the integrity of the structure nearly as badly.
Yeah. It's, once you cut into that facade, that's where-
And for a penny, and for a pound.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of where at this level, if we were wanting to add windows throughout those open walls, or those walls that are solid now, there would likely be some facade replacement with that, that by the time you cut in there and address the channels that are across it, you're replacing that facade and upgrading it to a different energy code as you go anyway. So that's where, once, if you're adding windows, you're really into the higher portion of the facade project.
To a certain degree, it's like pulling the pin on a hand grenade. Once you've made that decision, you're kind of into it.
As long as you don't let go.
Well, I think the windows, in my opinion, for a number of reasons, not the least of which are employees who are sitting in there, windows building. I think the windows are important.
I would tend to agree with that. I think the windows are important. Also, that just, again, those are really functional, but the aesthetic of that building would be much better with those windows back in that, on that east side.
Yeah, and that's where these concepts were-
On the west side.
Were shown to add in these and break up that facade too. So yeah, it's obviously, I mean, primarily for workability and interior space, but also helps break up that monolithic wall, all right, where it's all just solid white right now, doesn't fit well into the space, but by breaking it up with windows and something else facade-related to help break up the space, that's where this came from.
Yeah. And from purely aesthetic standpoint, I'd hit, but without the addition of those windows and breaking that up, it's still going to be up to a ugly build.
Mm-hmm.
And did we really invest partially and call it quits?
Yeah.
Or do we do the right thing, in my opinion, to, I mean, there is community value in aesthetic planning also, besides all of the other things that we're concerned about. And so I don't personally have a problem with making it aesthetically, please, as long as we're not breaking anything. I don't think we are if we go to that level.
So Scott, or, Scott, sorry, Jim, if we go with a brick and stone option, we don't need the sandblast? Then we would pull out the sandblasting portion of that, and it's all just signage.
Correct. But it's still a running total, so you're right. There would not be sandblasting involved, but by the time you get to that level project, it's a, it'd be a 2.7 million-dollar budget.
You don't get to subtract anything.
Yeah, you don't, you're not subtracting. Sorry. I had to, yeah, get creative in how I built this, but it wasn't like you can't take out the stucco out of that. It's, it's, once you get to that level, it's a 2.7 million-dollar-
Can you explain that note though underneath that column? Because I'm not quite sure I'm following that. This includes-
Yeah. I guess I should have mentioned that. It was one, we talked about that a little bit at the last work session, was the use of the metal panels and the cost of those, because they are a modern facade and they have the reputation of being more expensive, when actually they're quite cost-savings. And that was why, so I mentioned that here, that in this option, at that level, we would include some of those metal panel systems throughout the facade, and it reduces the cost by about 3.15 million dollars. And it reduces the cost by about three hundred thousand.
And that's reflected in the.
And that's reflected in there, yeah. That is.
So that number isn't all brick and stone. It's brick and stone and architectural metal panels.
Yeah, it would be similar to the um, to this level of, of, without the, without the large entrance feature and the corner feature. It would be this type of, of finish. So it'd be brick and stone on portion of it with a metal facade on another portion. So it'd be like, it'd be this without the corner and the entrance feature. Um, and the use of the metal panels actually reduced the cost of that by three hundred thousand. If we were to do a different type, if it'd be brick and stone or, or some other facade there, it actually would increase the cost by quite a bit. And that was, yeah, three hundred thousand in, in this case, unrelated to foundation work. So that was what, we had talked about a little bit before about the foundation work being part of it. But actually, aside from foundation work, it's just a cost of the facade itself is actually quite a, a savings. And going with something metal panel like.
Help me visualize the metal paneling. Would that look similar, you know, on the north side of the airport expansion where they have that pedal? Is that similar to what we're talking about?
Yep, yeah, it's like a, uh, it could be different types here. So we, we had shown, you know, in grays here on this, just trying to show different types of metal panel. But a um, yeah, ribbed middle panel behind and then some, something on top. Uh, whether it be another type of metal panel or perforated panel, which we, we talked about at the, the last work session. About different types of panels to put on there to decorate it a little bit and dress it up towards, not all one facade again. There are lots of options. I, I think um, at a concept level, it was something similar to what you're, you're referring to. Um, but there's lots and lots of options of style and color and um, different ways to lay out even in kind of a tile-like system.
So I, I feel like we've made some consensus to remove and not look at currently spending money on alley side improvements and a corner and entrance feature. And so I have a question about the corner, cause I'm looking at a picture of the building now on Google Maps. And it looks like the corner of the building is really, the, the current corner of the building is just a, 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 um, wall. Like that sticks out, but I suppose that, that wall that just sticks out is supporting a roof. But no, 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 like, can that just be knocked out without doing a whole big corner bell tower? I don't know, it wasn't really a bell tower, was it? It was a clock tower?
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like we're kind of all agreement that spending money on a clock tower with the parrot, like, is not.
Not what we want to do.
Yeah, but I wonder what can be done, if that corner can have some modifications.
Architectural feature?
But again, then that starts tying into the roof.
We'd have to look into it. You're right, it, it is um, in a way, supporting that wall system. But there may be options there for opening up. I guess knowing that that's the direction that we'd, not interested in the, the corner feature. But um, but usually like something architectural on that corner.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
So I mean, again, I'd have to go back to the experts with the, you know, with the scope of, you know, here's our budget. And here, we'd like to fit in um, these things into that budget.
I guess one of the things we'd have to take into consideration too is if we do something now, we're gonna have to do something later. You know, if this is gonna be just a continuing expenses for the next ten or fifteen years, are we better off to fix it once? And then have a different lifecycle out of it or continue to piecemeal it?
I think any, it, any, any level could be added on to or renovated in the future. But you're obviously gonna lose some efficiency there that, um, you know, whatever you add on in the future, in the future is just um, losing a bit of what you invest now.
It feels like we're not deciding to piecemeal it. We're deciding which one to do and then be done. Like, it isn't like, oh, we're gonna do this now and then we're gonna do the next one in two years.
Except for the alley side.
Except for the alley side. It feels like we're really deciding the end point, not just what we're doing first.
So is there any loss of efficiency if we decided not to do the alley side now, but put that out into the DJ?
Um, not in construction, um, just in mobilization of contractors and, and starting another project. So you, um, there's some efficiency of doing it all at once, right? But as far as you wouldn't have to tear out something to, you know, you wouldn't lose the construction costs. So that, that way would be an, an efficient, you know, project to do everything except for the alley side. And then potentially down the road, upgrade that later. That, that is a good way to divide the project.
Do you something to the alley side so it's not that stark the way?
Um, probably update the color. Uh, I think there's ways we could coat the, and change the color of it, yes.
Power wash it and spray paint it.
Right, yeah. We, we have, we, yeah, we, other than cleaning it, I mean, that's about as far as we've gone now.
Yeah, we'll be up there with a scaffold and a spray can.
There are windows needed on that backside of the building. They're, they're leaking now. And so that's actually one of the, included in this lowest cost option, the two hundred and fifty thousand. Actually does include replacing the windows on the backside, cause there are some that need replaced regardless of what we do facade wise.
So there's costs, even if we said do nothing, there's some windows that are leaking that need to be done regardless.
Yeah, I would say that this two fifty here that I've put in, in a streets project is kind of the, we need to do these things, I, in my opinion. That sidewalk, its lights and its windows, and it's separate, yes. So that is not included.
So that's, okay.
That is not part of the, the two point seven.
I got you.
Kind of seems the consensus that I'm, I'm hearing, and I'm gonna check with you all, is that that two point seven with the brick and stone is kind of the level we're looking at as a viable option?
Yes.
And that's a lot of money, but it's gonna be.
I don't know. I kind of keep.
I'm looking at the two fifty for the windows.
Based on his recommendation, we can't stop at one eight or two one. We're, we're either, we're either stopping at three fifty or we're all in for two seven.
You can budget it over two years if we stagger the work.
Yeah, and budget it over, um, you know, it could be a portion in this year and a portion in next year. And, and now that we're getting, you know, further into the year, we will have to look at schedule, right? And when we would want to start. Um, so that's part of this, depending on how much work we need to do in updating the concept. That is gonna push us even later into the year before we can start. So we're, we are looking at that. We wouldn't want to start removing facade in, you know, the fall time. You know, we'd, um, timing of the project would, would probably push us into spring of next year. And so a portion of it, design wise, um, some of the preliminary elements could be, uh, work could be done this year. Um, or it could be pushed into budget in twenty four and twenty five possibly, if that's how far we want to go out.
And this money would come out of, if it's not budgeted currently, we could budget some of it in for next year. But it would come out of just general fund for what it's currently.
Yeah, I think for this year, it would come out of the undesignated fund balance as a supplemental item. And we also have some of that downtown TIF money available for some of the historic, because it's updating an historic building. We wouldn't want to use all of that for it. Some could come out of that and then you could budget for the remainder of next year.
And that, that TIF money, we've got around six hundred?
Yeah, and a move up for change for sure, just to double check. Five million.
We spent.
We spent some of it, but we have some.
We'll get an updated.
Yeah, if we could get an updated number, that would be helpful to.
Look, look, from a timing standpoint, we still, assuming, let's, let's, let's say we gave you the direction of two seven today. I'm not saying we are at this point, but if we did, you still gotta go back and complete the architectural design.
Yep.
Um, I mean, you couldn't even really get started until fall.
Right, yeah, likely, if we went with the two point seven option, um, likely major construction portions of it. As far as removing facade and replacing it, wouldn't start until spring of next year. Because by the time we get through concept level design and come back to all with the recommendation and then begin the actual design after that, um, we would be into, yeah, fall time this year. Where if we went to a, you know, if we only did the sandblast option, that's something we could do this year. So like, that's the divider. I think once we get to that two point seven, we're looking at likely starting significant portions of it in next year.
So we would budget for all of it?
Yeah, all of it in twenty four, or we could split it across twenty four, twenty five.
It's definitely, as far as schedule for the project, it, it could definitely be completed in twenty four. As it, if we were starting in spring of twenty four, we would be finished in twenty four. Um, but design work, um, and then, and there may be other elements of this that could be budgeted or could be spent in twenty three. Design probably being the primary one, is that we could get our design complete this year.
And go, we would use the undesigned.
Undesignated or that TIF fund, which might actually, depending on the amount of the design cover, significant portion of that, so. What, what head nod do we want to give? Two point seven?
Well, I don't know about you guys, but uh, I'm leaning more toward the, the uh, sandblasting and, and signage. And uh, the uh, the pedestrian lights and that sort of stuff. And uh, I think that uh, architects have a far better uh, view at looking at stuff when it comes to color and being able to develop that. And uh, and maybe even that uh, separate community engagement projects on Main Street or whatever that, to see what we could do to improve the businesses. That, that's where I'm going. We're looking at, at maybe seven or eight hundred thousand dollars rather than uh, two point seven or more, a million. Because that's not a definite estimate, right?
That would be a budget number, so we would, the goal would be to get our concept level and our, um, under that. So I, my, my goal would be to come back to you all, the recommendation that is under two point seven, uh, overall project budget for the award to our CMGC.
So I'm not proceed.
Our goal would be under, uh, that would be our goal with the design would be to get that estimate under two point seven.
Does that include design fees?
Yes, so that two point seven is there is design, owner costs, contingencies, everything is in that two point seven.
So today, so this afternoon, we're, we're talking about the very first discussions we're gonna have about our twenty twenty four budget. And I'd like to look at this cost in the context of that whole budget. Instead of, me personally, instead of, instead of um, deciding something right now strictly based on the, this facade and this information, which I think is really great. But if I had a better picture of everything that we're looking at for twenty twenty four, like we're gonna talk about this afternoon. I, I would feel like I would have more information of how this fits into that bigger picture.
Okay.
I would, I'd tend to agree with that.
It'd be different if we somehow had to decide this right now and that discussion wasn't happening for six more months. But, but just this afternoon, we're gonna talk about the budget for twenty four. And you know, what other, what other things are we hoping to achieve? And just, I want to look at it in context.
Yeah, cause we want to make sure we keep our focus on, or increase on streets and things.
Yeah, the big picture and, and what other major street projects do we have? And we've talked about, you know, our public works facility and it just would allow us to look at the whole context of this and not a standalone. No, that's.
Now, we're having that conversation in an hour.
So I think we should pick up this conversation as part of that.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I kind of like that idea, cause then we know how much we're spending as a whole rather than.
Well, in order to get us back on track a little bit, we're gonna jump to item G then. Our, our sanitary sewer rate study recommendation, David Brice.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, this is, was included in the twenty twenty three budget to do a um, rate assessment on our sanitary sewer fund. Primarily looking at our high strength users, our restaurants, laundries, car washes and industrial users. And make sure that as our regulations are changing and our cost of service, our cost of operating the wastewater treatment plant change, you know, with those um, regulations, that we're adequately, adequately, uh, and fairly spreading these costs out over those customers. Um, and, and that was the, the reason we didn't actually go out for RFPs on this. Because Corolla Engineering has been doing a lot of those rated, or not the rate, but the operations assessments and the capital planning and things that are needed for those future regulations. And have a really good handle on those, those costs and those operational things. Um, so we went and talked to them. Um, they gave us a cost of just under sixty thousand dollars for doing that rate assessment. My concern with their proposal is that at the end of it, we may go, what if we did this? Or what if we did this and that we're gonna have some, maybe some additional what-if cost um, associated with that. So that was the reason that I recommend that we do it not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Um, we included about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for this, so we're well under our budget. Um, and I think we can make sure that we get a good end product at the end that meets all, all of the needs from the billing system as well as from operational costs. Yeah, um, spreading those costs equitably.
Does a rate study um, also do comparable rates in, in other municipalities? What, what they charge, um, is it, do that in addition to looking at that other stuff you mentioned?
We would definitely include the rate comparisons and stuff in, in our presentations and stuff. That would provide, here's where we set comparably with other communities.
Yeah, I know DOLA looks at those statistics when they evaluate projects that municipalities bring to them and, and they, yeah. The information, you know, where do those rates fall compared to other municipalities is key.
And where our median household income is here compared to other communities.
Exactly.
Cause yeah, there, that's all a part of that whole component of affordability.
Right, and the size of the municipality and, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I don't know.
All right, general city council discussion. I think we're gonna have a lot of discussion, twenty minutes, but. Any other discussion you guys want to bring up? All right. Moving to staff comments. Any staff comments or updates or reports?
Just a quick one from planning. Um, you all should be aware, we've got a open house for the code updates uh, this evening. Actually, the PD building. Uh, also want to update you on the housing needs assessment. So we're actually getting very close on that. And right now, we plan an open house for one day, May first at six P M. So we'll, we'll blast and a lot of information out on that here in the coming days, but that is the plan. We should have a fully final product at that point in time. Uh, and we will disperse it to the public from that point forward.
I have a question about today's open house for the community and, and, and my attendance or council's attendance. And that is, is it helpful if we go so we hear from the people who show up? Or is that a little like taking the temperature of the room of, uh, when we're voting on something at a council meeting? Are we better to have staff give the community information and gather opinions and then report back to council? Or I'm a little conflicted on whether it's, it's really important for me to be there or I should actually restrain myself from going and let you and the, let our staff and the community interact.
Don't unduly influence the community.
Well, I mean, it, cause it isn't, I mean, we have the opportunity to give you our impact anytime. So this definitely isn't an open ask for us to come and tell you what we think.
It's not quite the same, but it's kind of like us attending a planning commission meeting.
It's a little different legally, but it, but, but my point is similar, but my point is similar, yeah.
Yeah, given that it's a legislative uh, item and it's not a clause item, there's some flexibility in that regard. Um, it's a good question and I think I would look to you and I'd look to others to add, I might have a different opinion. Um, if, if it's worthy of you coming or just getting feedback from city staff following the meeting.
I plan on not attending for exactly that reason.
Cause we, we're happy to provide any feedback that comes out of it from public, like a commission. Again, this isn't an item that goes directly to a planning commission agenda, uh, given what it is. But there will likely be feedback that comes from that.
I'm leaning with these guys. The only reason that I could see it would be appropriate to show up is, I would hate for community members that show up to think, look, it wasn't even important enough for the council not to be here.
Right, yeah.
So if that could somehow be stated at the meeting, that, that I felt, that, I'm, I'm not sure how rewarding, but I'd like them to know there's a reason for us not being there.
I can certainly craft some language on the very front of the meeting.
Yeah, I just, we're a talkative group and I just feel like if we were there, then we start, it, it starts being our input and not the community's input.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy, I plan to elaborate on the fact that we've had a discussion on this that went for, what about an hour, fifteen minutes? Actually, it was a pretty deep discussion, so I know, I'm happy to provide that context and we can certainly, we can, council staffs can.
We might get better community input if we're not also there giving input. We might get better community input if we're not also there giving input.
And it tells you exactly how long it lasted, from Glenwood to Delta.
And, and no, I think from a public standpoint, if we're looking to have it a little less formal and for people to really provide their honest feedback, maybe that is the best, best-case scenario, so that's totally fine.
And it's not quasi judicial, so at any time, any of these folks can contact any member on council and talk to them more. I mean, that's, they, they could take all of our cards, they could send us emails, they can pick up the phone, we're available.
Absolutely.
I think that's the better.
Okay, I've been wondering a lot about that.
All right, any other staff comments or updates? If not, then we will adjourn. We have lunch, or do we?
We do. And can I ask you, I'll just stay logged into the board portal, we want to do a test vote, so you can see what it looks.
Oh, yeah, like right now?
Tomorrow night?
Sure, it's not, we just were hoping the broadcast would be.
Okay, well, our work session is adjourned.
Okay, thank you. And then Grease will line up at test vote on the last item on the agenda.